Good evening. And now I call to order the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting, Tuesday, November, I'm sorry, Tuesday, June 21st, 2022, 7:00 PM at the Meeting Room 39 Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia. Mr. McClusser, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Cheshire?
Here.
Mr. Dalton?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Mr. Barksdale?
Here.
Mr. Ingram?
Here. Before we take a moment of silence, I'd like to ask that you remember, certainly the people in the Ukraine, they tend to be forgotten, and an ex-deputy sheriff, Dean Combo, who left the county here, went to work for BWX in Lynchburg, lost a battle with cancer, day before yesterday. He is, was only 54 years old, and his brother David is a plant manager at Goodyear. So if we would now entertain a moment of silence. If you would, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
One nation, one God, indivisible, with whatever being justice for all.
Thank you all. Any items to be added to the agenda?
As I make a motion to add two items to matters from work session, first being Finance Committee recommendations, and second, Berkeley Group Work Order for County Administrations or Administrator Search, rather.
Okay, Mr. Scares, what about a second?
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Any discussion on that? All right, gentlemen, cast your vote. That has passed. Thank you all. Under the consent agenda, about a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We're going to do approval of the agenda first.
I'm sorry?
Approval of the agenda with the revisions.
You're correct. What about a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton, second. By Mr. Dudley, any discussion on that? All right, gentlemen, cast your vote. No comments or questions. And that has passed. Now, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, before y'all vote, I've just been notified by Chris Adcock. Item 7P, which is the town of Chatham slash county First Amendment to Master Water and Sewer Extension Approval, the document in the, in the packet is correct, except the town and the county now desire to have a 120-day extension rather than a 90-day extension. So when you approve the consent agenda, if that's okay with you, just know that that's, that's the difference you'll be approving, okay?
That's okay. Gentlemen? Yes, Mr. Warren?
Yes, sir. Mr. Ingram, I'm making motion that we approve the consent agenda with the two additional items and changing the town of Chatham and county First Amendment to Master Water and Sewer Extension Approval to 120 days from 109.
Thank you, sir. What about a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cheshire. Any discussion? All right, gentlemen, cast your vote on that. Waiting on a second. Okay. And that has passed. Thank you all. Item eight, this is presentation. So, gentlemen, if you would, let's go down. We have several presentations, and I'm not sure which ones up first, but maybe Chris Lynn?
Sure.
Give that to Slim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, gentlemen of the Board of Supervisors. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm excited here tonight because I have a presentation to make, and this is actually the second time in two years that we've had such an award given in the county. About this time, two years ago, Gretna Fire and Rescue had merged and really turned their service around and were the recipients of the Western Virginia EMS Council EMS Agency of the Year. And to put that in perspective, the Western EMS Council serves everything from here up to Covington area, down over Giles County, and back down to Patrick County, pretty big area. And about that time, two years ago also, we had another agency who had really started to bring in some new leadership and turn some things, really turn some things around, and started doing a terrific job down in Southern Indiana County, and that's Cascade Fire and Rescue. I want some members here, if y'all will come on up with us, please. I appreciate it. We have several of their members, and just to let you know, two years ago, this agency really, like I say, turned their operation around and started doing EMS transports. It was a brand-new thing for them. They went out and bought a couple of used ambulances, recruited several members. I was just down there, well, I think it was back in February, we had, we had to search in February for a young man that was lost down there, and we spent several days down there, and I was really impressed to see all the membership that they had grown and brought out. And I tell you what was even more impressive was, while I was there, I noticed that you had a lot of your members training, some new people that had just come in and spent some time and gone over EMS operations, and you could see the motivation and the energy, and that's, that's, that's just awesome. So one of my last official, official acts as the Public Safety Director with Mr. Ingram's help was to nominate y'all for the Western EMS Council Outstanding EMS Agency for 2022, and I'm happy to say, a couple weeks ago, you were given that award, and I'm here to present that to you, and congratulate you for all your hard work. I think this is just amazing. Like I say, this is a big deal, and, and it really is, and if you knew the history and how hard they had worked to come where they've come, and the service they're providing. If you haven't been down to Cascade, it's a little part of our county way down along the southern line. In fact, I can be eating quicker than I can be anywhere else, right? I've learned from Jordan, who works for Public Safety, how quick you have to get, where you have to go down there to get things. So they have provided a great service to that community, and they deserve this recognition, and I think it's heading in the right direction for the county as a whole and our public safety system. So thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sam. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for coming out tonight. These folks with the fire and rescue appreciate you so much. I had a neighbor that just recently, his house caught on fire, and he lost his house, and you don't know how helpless you feel when you lose the place that you reside. And, but thank you so much, because the fire departments that did show up that night, I mean, they was just a blessing to the family that lost everything. And we just thank you so much, can't do enough for you, appreciate everything that you do. But that's not the reason I'm here this evening. I have two folks that live in the district that I serve, in the Stanton River District, and they happen to have received two of the best awards for a couple that I know of. And the first one is, I'm going to ask her to come up. I told her I would embarrass her first, and we'll do ladies first. This is Emily B. Harker. Emily is a teacher at Liberty University, and Emily, you went to school at Duke University in Radford, okay? Graduated from Duke University, and what a blessing it is to have this couple. I know them personally. I attend church with them, but they, they are just, they've always been a true blessing since they've come into our church. But that's not the reason I'm here. The reason we're just expressing to Emily what it means to get one of the Teachers of the Year at Liberty University. I mean, that is just, to me, that's quite the accomplishment, and I just didn't want it to slide without saying something in public. I first asked them at church, and her first response was, "Everything that we do is because God give us the talent." So you can give her a hand for that. How about that? Everything that this couple does, it's to God be the glory, and I'm so thankful for that this evening. But I want to read you, we normally do like a resolution, but a lot of times, we get lost in the language, and at the end, when I'm done reading, you don't know what I've said, and you don't know who I've represented. But listen to what I've got to say about her. Certificate of Excellence, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, expresses its sincere congratulation and admiration for receiving the 2021-22 President's Award for Excellence in Teaching from Liberty University. And I might add, she teaches nursing. Is that correct? Okay. This award recognizes teachers who have promoted significant student learning, events by creative and innovative approaches to teaching, the effective use of instructional technology, and exceptional, all right, pedia, whatever, skill. Can you?
Pedagogical.
Pedagogical. Y'all ought to clap for me when I say that. Holy smoke. Anyway, you have performed commendably, bringing recognition not only to yourself, but to your family, to your employer, and to us as a county. We congratulate you on this momentous occasion and wish you the best for your future endeavors. Emily B. Harker, given this 21st day of June 2022, William Vic Ingram as chairman. And I am proud to give this to her this evening and for her to be represented and recognized by Pennsylvania County. Let's give her another hand. Thank you so much, and I'm just going to ask her to stay right here, because the next award is for her husband, and no, he don't teach at Liberty University. Nathan is actually a servant on the Planting Commission for the Stanton River District, and Nathan went to Virginia Tech, graduated from Virginia Tech. Now, in football, Tech's got a little bit of advantage, but now in basketball season, she whoops the socks off every most of the time. But there's a constant battle there, but I love this couple. I so much appreciate them, and I've said it once, I'll say it again, but Nathan graduated from Virginia Tech, and his major was in forestry. And Nathan is a logger, and Nathan got one of the logger, one of the logger of the year, basically, in the Commonwealth, and I'll read it to you in just a second. But Nathan also buys old home places that's built of logs, takes those apart, and builds homes out of those as well. So he took a forestry education and turned it into something, I just think it's dynamic. But I want you to listen to the words. Come on over here, buddy. You can hold her hand later. How about that? Yeah, if I have a big word, I need a college education. The Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors expresses its sincere congratulations and admiration for you receiving the Virginia Forestry Association Lager Merit Award. This award recognizes and honors the performance of an outstanding logger in the Commonwealth of Virginia. This award represents the best of the best and exemplifies, woo, I got through that one, the highest professional standards as you serve an effective, positive public role model for the entire logging industry. You have performed commendably, bringing recognition not only to yourself, but to your family and to the county. We congratulate you on this momentous occasion and wish you the best in your future endeavors. Nathan Harker, given this 21st day, June 2022, William Vic Ingram, Chairman. And on a personal note, too, you know, this couple's got a tremendous testimony in our church. They live a life that's pleasing to the Lord, and I, I can say that and be proud of it. But these guys, they mean the world to me, and they didn't want to be honored. They wanted all of it to go to the Lord, but I said, "I'm going to give a little bit to you while you're here." So let's give Nathan a hand this evening. And also, got a couple of folks from the Planting Commission that are here, and appreciate you all coming. Thank you, everybody, and I want to give them an opportunity, maybe, to, to say a word. If you don't want to, that's okay.
Me?
Yeah.
I couldn't be prouder to live in Pennsylvania County. Me and my wife have called this place home for 15 years now. We appreciate you guys, all of you, for the work that you do and for all the civil service in our county. And shout out to my Planting Commission buddies. Thanks for coming tonight. Appreciate you.
Thank you so much. Emily, anything you'd like to say? Yeah.
I'm going to say the same thing. It's a privilege to live here.
Absolutely. Yep. Let's get a, let's get a picture with Nathan in the center as well, and then maybe both of them. Is that okay?
Okay.
HF and Janet want you guys to come up here as well. How about that? You may not address for it, but come on here. HF Haymore, he's chairman of Planting Commission, and then Janet.
Thank you, Dan.
One on each side. Look, we ain't got all night. Just get over here now. Come on.
Thank you so much.
Let's give him another hand. Thank you.
Each person addressing the board under hearing of the citizens' show.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. We have a couple more presentations. We have 8B, which is the school sales tax presentation, and I believe Dr. Irwin is here to represent that.
Okay. What about Paul Irwin? Come on up, sir.
Thank you. Good to have you, sir.
Thank you all very much. And what I have to talk about, I guess, pales in comparison. I'm not the fire and EMS. Congratulations to them. I'm not Teacher of the Year. Congratulations. I'm not Lager of the Year. And I'm obviously not Dr. Jones, so there's a lot of things I'm not, it looks like, tonight. But I am Paul Irwin. I'm a veterinarian. I own the animal clinic, Chatham Animal Clinic, right across the street here, and I'm here tonight to speak about the 1% sales tax referendum. And I've already heard we don't have all night, so I'll be pretty quick about it.
You're good.
So a few things quickly. The four PCS, we're still working hard to try to get the word out, to try to educate those in the community, those in the county, about what this is for and what it's not. That seemed to be the biggest problem with it last year, was lack of education of what it was going for, what it had to be used for. You'll see some of the signs out in the yards, the four PCS, we have those. If any of you all need those to give out to your constituents or in your communities, we have those available. The group has been to over 20 different community events and meetings, everything from Farm Bureau to cattleman's associations to schools, trying once again to get the word out and educate everybody about the 1% sales tax and what it's going to be used for. We're also really grateful to the Pennsylvania County NAACP youth, and Mr. Fitzgerald, who is still here, got us on at WKBY with a bunch of different segments for the youth to speak about what it would be used for. There's going to be some videos that WKBY has agreed to give us to get the word out, and so we're appreciative of that, and you should hear those coming out here pretty soon. And so one, one other quick, I've got a bunch of pages, but I'm not going to read that. I'm a veterinarian, as I said, and mainly, I do cows and horses. And a couple of weeks ago, I was actually in Cascade at a client of mine, and he's got about 100 cows, and we were getting ready to work some cows, and you work them through a chute, if you can imagine, they're in a single line, and the cows tend to just file in one after the other, and we always have a problem with his place, that the cows just try to run over top of each other in that chute. When I got there that day, I noticed the first thing off, that he had three doors separating the chute into, into three different areas, where one cow could stand behind it with a door, and they were metal doors that were welded together. They were, they were sanded off, they were painted, they were on rollers on the top, and I walked up to them, and they just slid buttery smooth. Daryl, you can appreciate that, that you could just slide one right behind a cow quickly, it locked in place, it was easy to open back up. And so I said to the farmer, I said, "Man, that's really nice. I like what you've done with that." And he said, "I didn't do that." And I said, "You didn't?" He said, "No." He said, "That young man over there did." There were two kids, young adults, high school kids, that were working for him, that I guess go to Tunstall, this was in Cascade. And he said, "That young man right there did every bit of it. He's in the welding class at CTE." You couldn't believe how nice these things were. And so I talked to him about it, and he's, and the farmer said he had done it all of his own, that he just told him what it needed, and the kid came up with it and designed it and did it all by himself, and they were fantastic. So as I was talking to the kid, I said, "Well, that's really great. You learned all that at CTE?" "Yes, sir. I'm just a junior. I've got one more year. I'm going to try to get better. We're going to some, some competitions." And I said, "Well, what do you need to be better at that?" And he said, "I need more space." He said, "When we're welding in there, we're so jammed up that we get flash burns from the person welding next to us. We need more space. We need more dividers." And so to me, this is the essence of what the 1% sales tax is for, is to help expand those schools, to, school construction is what it's got to go for, to help the CTE Center to have more spaces like that, to train kids like that. This farmer said that he would offer this kid a job today. He said, "But he'll never take it. He's too good for what, anything I need." So this is a kid that's workforce-ready. He's ready, he's going to be, graduate and be ready to go to have a great job. Heck, I'd hire him, and I don't even need any welding. He was that good. So that kid needs more space. So what we need for the four PCS, especially from you guys, is still some names of people in your community, your constituents, that can help us get the word out, people that you know speak well, that are engaged, that are for this, that can help us get the word out, can help us do some work, can help speak at events in your community so that we can continue to educate people. So that young man needs more space, and I need more names. So if you can do that, we would certainly appreciate it. We're going to keep working, get this thing passed, so we can improve the safety in our schools, and get this kid some more space, so he doesn't get burnt by his neighbor. Thank you all very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Sheriff? I have a couple questions. Hey, Paul. Mr. Warren's got a question, if you can believe that. Believe it.
It's hard to believe it.
It's hard to believe. Go ahead, Mr. Sheriff. I know y'all are coming every month, so could you ask them, when they come back next month, if they will provide us with the number of mobile units that we're having to use in the county now in order to accommodate our student population?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I don't have that, I don't think, tonight. We did have that, it's in some of the flyers that we have that are going out.
I would like, I'd like to have that number, because I think the public...
Dr. Jones certainly has that, and, and you know, we've recognized that as a huge issue, not only for the teaching, the teachers that are in that. I was actually speaking at the Farm Bureau meeting, and, and one of the, one of the Farm Bureau board members said, you know, "Hey, I'm for it from a tax perspective," but he said, "My wife is one of the ones that has to teach out of one of those trailers." And she says, "It's just horrible trying to keep the students focused."
Well, I'm very concerned about what we're seeing nationally and the safety of that. Well, I'm very concerned about what we're seeing nationally and the safety of that.
The safety of them. They're hard to secure, of course, not only from a safety standpoint like that, but weather-related, tornadoes, things like that. How do you get those kids out of there? They're hard to lock down, so I agree. So that's one of the biggest goals.
And I hope our public will understand that all of these funds will have to be used for capital projects in order to promote our school systems, and it does create safety. I know there's not a citizen in Pennsylvania County that wants to experience what we had in Texas, and this certainly will, I won't say it'll eliminate all the possibilities, but it certainly will help those possibilities, and I hope folks will be mindful of that when they go to vote. The other thing I wanted to mention to the school system, if you're not already doing it, is we work really hand-in-hand a lot with the city of Danville, in particular, on economic development and stuff, and that goes right along with the school system. And they have a TV network, so I hope we'll reach out to them to see, because a lot of the county's citizens use that TV network to keep up with current events and all. And I feel confident in saying that I think our colleagues from the city of Danville would be willing to assist us with getting that message out for our school system. So if you hadn't done that, I would suggest you do that.
Yeah, I think they've looked into that. They have been good, the city of Danville, the school system, and the committee that got it passed in Danville last year. We've spoken with them on tactics and things they've used to try to help get the people in Danville to see it. And you're right about the trailers, not only that, but some of this money would go, my understanding, there's three or four schools that do not have a safety corridor in the lobby where they can't let people in to stand out of the rain, or to hold somebody there until they can unlock the door to let them in. So there's another safety concern that I know Dr. Jones had identified, that we've gotta get rectified quickly. And at least in my mind, like you said, I mean, these are things that are gonna have to be done, one way or the other. And so, this tax certainly makes it easier on you guys. You know, it's equivalent, from what we can tell, to an eight cents increase, an eight cents per hundred increase in the real estate tax. So it's coming from somewhere. And some of the things we've seen, at least out of Halifax, I'm thinking, they thought when they were looking at it, about 30% of that tax was paid by people outside of the county. So you're looking at another way to kind of get some of that money in that doesn't come right on the burdens of the backs of the taxpayers of Pennsylvania County.
I'm all for 30% of our bills being paid by somebody else.
Absolutely. All day long.
Would you like to pay some of mine?
No, sir, but I'll let you pay some of mine.
Just leave them at the door, if you will.
Anything else? Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right. Ms. Lisa, very well, I think you're up next. Give us a tourism update. Good to have you. And you have some colleagues you're bringing as well? I knew Katie, but I didn't know this lady between you guys.
And you will, very quickly. So Chairman Ingram, Vice Chair Barxale, and members of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, and Mr. Monday. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to provide this quarterly update. As you remember, about three months ago, I was standing before you to talk to you about the process that's taken place to build out our regional tourism program. But before I bring up our presenter for the evening, I'd like to invite Katie Saunders, project manager for your very own economic development office here in Pennsylvania County, to share a few words with you. So Katie.
Welcome.
I'm not quite as tall as Lisa, so make this sound a little bit... Good afternoon. Pennsylvania County's Economic Development Department supports the launch of the regional tourism program, which is directed by Lisa Meriwether, the economic, excuse me, the city of Danville's tourism director. I have and I will continue to work closely with the city of Danville to make sure the county is fully engaged to build out this regional tourism program. Starting this afternoon and over the next few days, every home and business in the community is going to receive a postcard inviting them to take an important new tourism survey online. Their survey will help drive our branding effort and the larger tourism strategic plan for the region. So having the community's input is very important. More than 80,000 residents in Pennsylvania County and the city of Danville will be receiving this survey. So to be a part of this program, it's truly an honor.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We appreciate Katie. She's done a lot of work helping guide and work with us on the tourism program. So, gentlemen, your presentation tonight will be given by Jennifer Eddy, and Jennifer Eddy is the Chief Marketing Strategist for Eddy Alexander, who we have commissioned to work alongside us to build out this regional tourism program for the city of Danville of Pennsylvania County. With that, I'd like to bring Jennifer Eddy to the microphone. Jennifer?
Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you so much for having me tonight. I'm really excited about this project and about the opportunity to tell you how we're gonna get citizens engaged. I think you have a really unique opportunity in front of you to build something that's really collaborative from the ground up, and I'm really honored to be a part of it. So I will talk fast, because I know you have a lot on your agenda tonight, but if you need me to slow down or you have any questions, please let me know. Up, hold on. There we go. Okay. So first, I'm Jennifer Eddy with Eddy Alexander. My firm is headquartered in Roanoke, and we have lots of ties to Pennsylvania County and the Danville region, and we're really excited about what's happening, not just for this community but for the state. I think there's tremendous opportunity on the horizon, and as somebody who moved from northern Virginia down to southwestern Virginia for a better quality of life, I'm super excited for the attention that's getting shown our way. But listen, I think I heard someone say something about, you know, 30% of taxes being paid by somebody else is a good thing. The only way to make money that doesn't have to be paid by your citizens, that I know of, is through tourism and visitation. And so, it's a sustainable way to build the quality of life and the services and infrastructure that you're gonna provide to your citizens for generations to come, and I think you have a really unique moment. So I don't have to tell you all what's going on, but just to recap for anybody else who might be watching, that's less familiar, you know, tourism is a really important industry for this community. It has been, even before some of the recent announcements. According to the Virginia Tourism Corporation, the tourism economy was already supporting $2.4 million in annual local tax revenue annually, Danville and Pennsylvania County, and supporting about 1,500 jobs locally before the pandemic. Now, with a $500 million, 600-room Caesars Resort project under construction in the city of Danville, those numbers are very likely to surge, and that's going to have, if well-planned, a positive impact on the quality of life in the area because of that kind of net gain that you're gonna get to the economy. So what we want to do is help coordinate efforts between the county and the city and the citizens to help tell your story in a way that represents your community. And so, we have planned to have a collaborative effort to engage the citizens in that process. And so, we want to tell you a little bit about what you can expect from these wonderful women here and from our team in the weeks ahead. I will do this right. You might just have to wait for it. Maybe I won't do it right. Kevin, are you able to help me? I'm sorry. Doesn't seem to want to go. I'm gonna restart it. That always works with the computer, right? Please hold. Okay. Let's see here. This is the behind-the-scenes tour, slide deck. Just a little bit of technical... No problem. So while we're getting our technology coordinated here, I'll tell you a little bit about our firm. So Eddy Alexander is a marketing and growth strategy consulting firm. We work primarily with six main industries, and I think you'll find they overlap with the local economy pretty nicely. We have a practice dedicated to tourism, a practice dedicated to economic development, one dedicated to higher education, to healthcare, to emerging technology, and to professional services. So we are not a firm that is in the business of B-to-C consumer marketing. We specialize in these areas, what we believe are change-the-world, change-the-economy, better-community kinds of marketing endeavors. So we are particularly excited about this one. We work all around the country, and I'll share with you some of the clients that we've worked with in the tourism space. Okay. So in the corporate space, we've worked with many household brands that you may recognize. In the place-based arena, we've worked with a number of different communities, including regional collaborations. So the Virginia's Crossroads region includes 11 counties and one city. New River Valley is five counties and one city and two major universities. And we've worked with individual counties like Floyd County and also national parks and things like that. On the brand side, we've also worked with some household names in the tourism space. So hopefully, your team will find that our quality is second to none, and our processes are really rooted in making sure that we're building something that's going to last for you for a very long time. So kind of why invest in tourism? We talked a little bit about this, but it's about the economic, environmental, and social impact that this particular industry can provide for your community. So it is one of the few industries that when you invest in it, you're bringing local money into the economy that wouldn't otherwise be here. It's a net gain for you. It can provide more jobs, better public resources, better services, more activities, but it also helps fund those very same things that visitors like are the things that your citizens like. So it helps upkeep your cultural heritage, your artistic endeavors, and helps fund those resources that make living here a great thing to experience. And honestly, tourism is the front door to economic development. It's the opportunity that you have to show someone your community and why they might want to live here, who might not have otherwise known that you had this to offer, and it's a beautiful thing to offer. So we are a data-driven firm. We are very deep, deeply steeped in data. We study tourism from an economics perspective. So we are holding ourselves accountable, and we hope you'll hold us accountable, for really moving the needle in terms of economic impact for your community. So what we're gonna present to you first will ultimately be a brand identity. It will be fun, it will be colorful, it'll be all the things that you expect a brand to be, but the reason we're doing it is not pretty pictures. The reason we're doing it is because ultimately it's gonna have an impact. It's gonna help pay for, you know, things in your schools or new equipment for those firefighters that we saw up here earlier today. All of those things can be net benefit when you invest in tourism. It also can improve your citizens' satisfaction when you survey, you know, the community about how do they like living here, why do they like living here. Communities with strong tourism programs do better. They tend to, people, citizens tend to recognize the value that they get from the economic benefit of tourism, but they also recognize the social and environmental benefits that they get from tourism. And then improve reputation. More people will know what you do, why you do it, and why they might want to come here and spend time and money. Okay. So this is kind of how we're gonna do it. Whenever you buy anything, and we're all consumers, we all do this every day, as you make a decision about what you're gonna buy, whether it's who you're gonna vote for, the soda you're gonna buy from a machine, or, you know, another kind of product, where you're gonna visit on vacation, you need to be aware it exists before you even consider it relevant. You need to consider it relevant before you can decide if you prefer it over other ways to spend your time, money, attention. And then you need to have the process of selecting it be easy, right? In a store, you may go up to the cash register and you may say, you know, "I really like this thing, but I only have credit cards on me." And if they say, "Well, we only accept cash," too bad. They've spent all the money at the top of the funnel to get you in the store, to get products placed there that you would like, but ultimately, that sale's not gonna go through. So when we think about marketing, we're thinking about this funnel and really building a plan that meets people at each stage to help kind of guide them through. And the reason we do this is the stuff at the top is really, really expensive. Awareness is the most expensive thing that you can build, but if you set up your funnel well, the things at the bottom are repeatable, and so they can be very cost-effective. So the more you do well with your funnel setup at the very beginning, which is where we are with this program, the more that those raving fans are gonna come out of the other side and tell other people to come to Danville. "And I had a great experience. I had a great opportunity here. Come check out this, that, or the other." When they do that, they're cutting your costs at the top, right? And more people are coming with less investment there, and you can build that funnel so that the same investment reaps better returns over time. This works for every kind of marketing and every kind of industry, and it especially works for tourism. And so, we are thinking about this from a very kind of scientific approach as we build this plan out. I am going to get this thing mastered before I leave. Okay. So when people think about tourism brands, they often think about logos, color palettes, font styles. Yes, we will get all of that as part of your brand package, but a brand really isn't those things. A brand is what people say about you and think about you when you're not in the room to influence it. So what we want to do is kind of understand where people are now, your citizens, but also your visitors, what they think of you now, what you want them to think of the best parts of you, and then we want to start to drive that brand as a package of materials, the messages, visuals, all the things that we're gonna put forward that are gonna move people from where they are now closer to where you want them to be. And we want that new brand to be both authentic, deeply steeped in who you are today, but also aspirational. Otherwise, none of this is worth anything, because if you're just telling the world what already exists, you're not pushing your community forward, you're not guiding anyone towards the future that you want, and we want to make sure that we're doing that. So we're gonna use a five-phased approach. We're gonna start with a discovery process, and you heard a little bit about that earlier this evening in terms of our survey. So we start with a discovery phase, and we do discovery from a lot of different angles. We look at primary and secondary research. We look at all kinds of kind of data about where people go, how long they spend, what kind of money they spend in different areas. But the most important piece of information we look at is what your citizens think, say, and feel today. And so, starting tomorrow, these postcards Lisa referenced and that we have in front of us, they're very large, so you can see them, and you will know when you get them in the mail, will be mailed to every household and every business in the community. When they arrive, on the back, there's a QR code and a web address where people can take an online survey. And if anyone does not have access to the internet, they can also go to a local library, and the librarians will help either with the computer or provide you a printed survey. So we want, we hope, every citizen in the community, but we want as many citizens in the community to participate in this survey. It takes a little bit. It's thorough. It's about 15, maybe 20 minutes to take the full survey, but we're gonna look at a lot of different things. What are your favorite places? What do you think are the best things in the community to promote? What do you want people to think about when they come to the community? What does tourism, a tourism program's success look like for you? We're gonna gather all that data. We're gonna slice it and dice it and look at what people in different areas of the community think about that, and we're gonna use all of that to gain a better understanding of what is authentic to the community today and what is aspirational to the community today. We're then gonna take all of that information, we're gonna synthesize it, and we're gonna present it back to the community in some public meetings later this summer. We're gonna go, "Hey, guys, this is what we heard." Before we ever put pen to paper, before we ever design anything for you, we're gonna say, "This is what we heard. This is what we think we're going for. Is this right?" And we're gonna have a validation session and community feedback, and we're gonna say, "Hey, if we didn't get it right, tell us where we were off. If we need to prioritize one thing we heard over another higher, let us know that." After that listening session, our creative team is going to start developing out the brand identity. That's gonna include the logos and the color palettes and all those taglines and the fun things that people think about when it comes to a brand. From there, we'll also start to use all of that data that we collected, the survey data, but also the business data of your tourism industry, to start to develop a marketing plan. That marketing plan will say, "Where are we gonna put ads? How long are they gonna stay? How much should we be spending on tourism if these are the results that we want?" That master plan is then going to get presented back to you all and to the city council in Danville for final approval and next steps. And hopefully, by next spring, hopefully National Tourism Week, we will be in a place where we can be launching the new Danville, Pennsylvania brand with a big bang, and we'll be in a place where we can roll out a program that can be measurable and repeatable year after year and provide sustainable value to the community. So that's what we're driving for. It's a couple of months-long plan as an initiative, but we think it's really, really important that your community is involved and really at the heart and center of what we're trying to communicate to the world. As a community organization, we don't want to come in as outsiders and say, "This is who we think you are." It's really important that we're starting with what the community believes they are and where they want to go, and then designing from there. So this is just kind of a little bit more detail about what you can expect over the next couple of months. It's everything I just talked you through, but when I give you a copy of it, you'll[1722.76] It's everything I just talked you through, but when I give you a copy of it, you'll be able to read it in more detail. This is the timeline that we sort of talked about. So this is for kind of our piece of the work. We've just started the program, the surveys will be dropping tomorrow. But it is online, so if anybody's watching right now and wants to go and take the survey, it's dp tourismsurvey.com. You can take it tonight and be a step ahead of the postal service. And by the end of the calendar year, we hope to have kind of the brand identity set so that we can move into the implementation pieces. We can be working on building out the website, getting the ads ready, so that by spring we can be launching out and having a real economic impact driving into the new fiscal year. So this is what the survey looks like. Our ask of you all and anybody who's here tonight, all of you who are here tonight, we hope that you'll take this survey, that you'll look for the postcards in the mail. If you own a business, that you'll put them up in your store or at your cash register. Ask people if they've taken it. Remind people how important it is that your community and your citizens are sort of driving your story and what you put out into the world. We ask that you keep an eye out for later this summer and attend those community presentations, whether it's online or in person, so that we can get that validation and make sure before we start designing things, we have a really clear North Star, what we're orienting to. And then at the end of the survey, we do ask if people want to give us their contact info. You don't have to, but if people provide us their contact info, we'll be selecting from those certain groups of people to be involved in focus groups and interviews and some other kind of data gathering processes that we'll use to make sure that we're kind of validating the data every step of the way, getting some early input on the creative before we start spending money on anything. We want to make sure everybody's bought in, and it's something everybody can be excited about. So all of that is coming. And again, we're just really excited to be a part of it. I talked a little bit about kind of that balance between authentic and aspirational. I want to remind everybody that when we build this brand, it will be something new, right? It'll be something new that is going to represent a lot of different things. The county, city, all of the different assets that you have to offer, what you are today and what you want to be in the future. And so at first, if it feels really familiar, it feels like we hit the nail on the head, then we messed up because we didn't move you forward. We just gave you back a mirror and said, this is who you are. But if it feels too crazy, if it feels like we sent you off in outer space, then we missed the mark too. We're looking for that 50-50 blend. We want to be achievable, accurate historically. We want to be rooted in your community's truth as your community sees it. But we also need to be, from a business sense, differentiated, noteworthy, and aligned with your community's vision of where you want to go. So we're going to ask you to be patient with us. It's going to be a long process to get there, and when we roll it out, it's going to take a little bit to digest whatever we give you. But we have a long history of building these kinds of brands. These are two that we built for two other communities in the western part of the state, Floyd, Virginia, and Virginia's New River Valley as a region. And they've been, I guess they've both been in field probably about five years now. And they've provided tremendous value. We are really proud that when we drive around the Roanoke region, we often see these little logo stickers in the cars of window. That's how we know we arrived, right? People are really proud to identify with these little visual icons that we had some part in giving meaning to. So with that, I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity to present and open it up to any questions.
All right, thank you. Gentlemen, any questions? If not, thank you for coming.
Thank you, I hope to see you guys again. Please take the survey.
All right, thank you, Lisa, thank you, Katie.
Thank you, guys.
Ms. Carolyn, any more presentations?
That's all.
All right. It brings us down to item nine, hearing of the citizens. Each person addressing the board under hearing of the citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county or registered agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record, unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during hearing of the citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum of 45 minutes. Any individual that has signed up to speak during said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. McCluster, who do we have?
Jim Scares.
Mr. Scares, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Jim Scares and I live in the Westover District. First off tonight, I would like to thank supervisors Bob Warren, Ron Scares, Jesse Barksdale, and Tim Dudley for voting to approve my appointment to the DSS Board. Tonight, I pledge to you that I will do my best to ensure the DSS Board and the department continues to provide exceptional service to the community. I further pledge that I will not perform any unauthorized investigation against any DSS Board member or employee, nor will I use my position to intimidate DSS employees into providing me with client files that I'm not authorized to have. Secondly, tonight, I would like to thank the leadership of this board for finally coming to their senses and working out a deal with a new reassessment firm to ensure the Commissioner of Revenue adds the structures to the property book that were found by Bright Minds. Some of these structures date back to before the 2018 reassessment. And the fact that the county can only go back three years to recoup back taxes makes it all the more important that the Commissioner of Revenue adds these structures to the property book. Lastly, I would like to correct a statement made by a member of this board in last month's meeting. I was accused of attacking them at the God's Pit Crew banquet. If he defines telling the truth and attack, then I plead guilty. In truth, I was responding to the board member referring to me and my brother using a vulgar word. I approached the board member that night and said, well, hello, glad to see you. He turned and walked towards me with his hand out and said, are you really glad to see me? I said, well, not really, but I thought it would be polite. He then pulled his hand back and said, you're an a-hole just like your brother. At that point, I said, at least we aren't liars who lied three times on a witness stand in federal court. He said, I didn't lie, to which I said, yes, you did. I have a copy of the trial transcript and I have the proof that you lied. At that point, his wife stepped in and said, my husband is not a liar. I turned to her and said, yes, ma'am, he is. He lied three times on a witness stand in federal court, three times. I then turned and walked away. I guess if that board member doesn't want to be attacked in public, in public, he shouldn't call one of, someone a curse name to their face. For those that doubt my version of this encounter, there were two people standing behind me that heard the whole conversation and later told me they were shocked that a supervisor would use that language. I told them his language is the least of his character flaws. By the way, I'm glad to see that the new seating arrangement finally adheres to the BOS bylaws. It only took you six months to correct it. Thank you.
Ms. Carolyn, do we have anyone else?
Lori Midkiff.
Good evening, members of the board. Lori Midkiff, and I hail from Gretna. We are on the cusp, okay, we are on the cusp of a disaster the likes of which we have never seen in America and for which we are ill-equipped. The mainstream corporate media and medical industrial complex are actively concealing vital information that consumers need to know with regard to adverse reactions up to and including death caused by COVID-19 vaccines. CDC currently reports 28,714 deaths due to COVID vaccines. But by point of comparison, the 1970 swine flu vaccine program was shut down and branded a fiasco upon just 450 cases of Guillain-Barre syndrome. Columbia University researchers conducted a 2021 study of all-cause mortality as a function of the vaccine rollout. They found that their results suggest that the CDC VAERS only reflects about 5% of the true numbers of deaths and adverse events related to the experimental injections. If they are correct, the real death numbers are closer to 600,000 and counting. But the death statistics are not only the part of the problem. CDC also reports these statistics due to the vax, which are updated weekly. 14,777 heart attacks, 53,621 now permanently disabled, 4,711 miscarriages, 15,710 instances of Bell's palsy, 41,666 severe allergic reactions, 9,696 episodes of anaphylactic shock. What's more, what's more is that the vaccinosis disease appears to be progressive, causing its victims to develop inflammatory disease, autoimmune disease, and AIDS. Many have also developed cancers, infertility, and neurological conditions. Now is the time to pull together as a community and make a disaster plan to handle this healthcare crisis, which is true, truth already underway. Unfortunately, many of our healthcare professionals that typically rely on, will themselves be victims to this cause. We already have vaccine detox protocols, and some of the best medical minds on the planet are developing remedies to help the vax. What we need now is real leadership, your leadership. We need someone to step up and be the hero here. In your packet, I've included a list of resources for the vax, a list of community education events to give you all the public opportunities to learn the Singaporean Protocol for Vaccine Detox and a 17-page annotated bibliography of 41 scientific sources that demonstrate the toxicity of the vax. Please direct any questions to the Save the Vax president, Sean Barker. And allow me to say, for a few of you who took the shot, you have more than one reason to take this seriously, and I hope you do while you still have a chance.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, Ms. McCluster, anyone else?
Sandra Meyer.
Ms. Meyer, come on up, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Meyer. I'm in the Chatham District, and I'm here to add on to the information she just shared. Dr. Peter McCullough is an internist cardiologist and epidemiologist managing the cardiovascular complications of both the viral infection and the injuries developed after the COVID-19 vaccine. He's in Dallas, Texas. Since the outset of the pandemic, Dr. McCullough has been a leader in the medical response to the COVID-19 disaster. He has 56 peer-reviewed publications on the infection and has extensively commented on the medical response to the COVID-19 crisis in the heel. Also, America Out Loud and Fox News. I did radio for years, if y'all close your eyes, I'll be more relaxed, okay? The following is from Dr. McCullough's article, "One mRNA, One Spike Protein, 1,291 Diseases: Unlimited Ways to Die." It was published on March 18th, 2022. We have learned from the first sets of documents that was released by Pfizer, listen to this closely, please, that they just released this to the public on the Pfizer BioNTech vaccine, that in the first 90 days of public use, the sponsor received reports on 1,223 deaths, that's the first 90 days, and did not report this to the public or pull the product off of the market in a voluntary recall, which is prudent and customary for this type of unexpected death rate. To make matters worse, Pfizer catalogued 1,291 unique adverse events of special interest with an entire range of diseases that fall in the categories, got to catch my breath, of neurological, cardiovascular, immunologic, and hematologic category. Additional concerning areas include fetal loss, in ill-advised conceiving of childbearing women to take one of the vaccines, and the emergence of either de novo or accelerated cancers. In many cases, common to death in these illnesses is thrombosis or blood clotting. The spike protein is strongly thrombogenic, even in the absence of platelets. As a result, the spike protein tips the body towards coagulation on a long-term basis. That means if a stroke or heart attack is going to happen, it could be more explosive or deadly in someone who has been vaccinated. Likewise, and this is doctor, this is a doctor, this, not me. Likewise, if a patient has an underlying blood clotting disorder or an occult cancer, being vaccinated makes it more likely to have a fatal thermo... Where's that guy? Yes, thromb, I knew it earlier, but I'm nervous now, I'm sorry. Thrombobolic, that's, I'll tell you what it means, event. It means pulmonary embolism, stroke, myocardial infarction. Finally, the Phi 2 segment of the spike protein has been found to be cancer-promoting by interacting with the tumor suppressor P53 gene and the BRCA gene known to promote breast and female reproductive cancer. All of these are facts that have been studied and we're trying to get the truth out. For all of these reasons, people are protesting in large numbers because the truth is coming out, and we're trying to stop the vaccine programs while CEOs are still pushing for the shots. Tension could not be greater as the truth is revealed. Thank you for listening, I won't read all of this, God bless, and y'all won't look.
Thank you, ma'am, at least a presentation with some substance. Anyone else, Ms. McCluster?
Elsie Walker, Jr.
Come on up, sir, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Elsie Walker, Jr., and I'm representing the First Pentecostal Holiness Church in Danville, Virginia, which has property located at 3016 Franklin Turnpike in the Chatham-Blairs District. This board will be addressing this issue tonight under the unfinished business part of the meeting, but I would like to speak about it for the church. The church requested real estate tax exemption for the two parcels of land at this location and for refunding of any previously paid taxes the church could receive. At the April 19th meeting of the Board of Supervisors, the motion was made to grant the tax exemption and to reimburse the church back three years to the statute of limitations or whatever the standard operating procedure for reimbursement. This motion was passed unanimously. Chairman Ingram stated, you have your exemption and you will get money back. The Commissioner of Revenue Office has not agreed with the reimbursement that was passed in the motion at the April 19th, 2022 business meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Therefore, it was put back on the agenda tonight for the supervisors to decide the outcome. The church requests that this Board of Supervisors clear this up by granting the tax exemption to be effective January 1st, 2019, so that the church could receive the previously agreed-upon three-year reimbursement. The past three years, 2019 through 2021, the church has paid a total of $8,799.66 in real estate taxes on these two parcels. The request for exemption and reimbursement was made due to the church recently becoming aware that the Code of Virginia grants tax exemption by classification for property owned by churches if it is exclusively occupied or used for religious worship and includes such additional adjacent land reasonably necessary for the convenient use of such property. In closing, nothing has changed with the church's calls us to qualify for this real estate tax exemption. We just did not realize that we qualified for it and needed to apply for the approval of it before this board. So while it may be argued that it was or it was not an error in assessment, we paid this tax for the past decade not realizing that we could request a tax exemption. Again, we request that the Board of Supervisors clear this up by granting the previously agreed-upon three-year reimbursement. I thank you for your help and support in this matter and for your service to our county.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Item 10, public hearings, this is rezoning public hearings. Pursuant to Article 5, Division 6 of the Pittsman County Zoning Ordinance, the Board of Supervisors has been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, the board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Pittsman County. The board must ensure that all of its decisions and regulations are directed at these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pittsman County, its citizens, and its prosperity. Case number one is public hearing R22-008. Ms. Raxdale, I believe you will do the presentation. I'm going to open this public hearing at 8:04 PM. Thank you, ma'am.
Case R-22-008, Robert and Barbie Eames have petitioned to rezone 7.41 acres located on State Road 718, Snake Path Road in the Chatham-Blairs election district from RC 1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for two dwellings to be placed on the property. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses- all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The planning commission recommended by a seven-to-zero vote with opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Barbie Eens is here to represent the petition.
All right. Come on up, please. Yes, ma'am. Come on up. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Thank you. Just talking. That microphone wouldn't hear you.
I don't have anything else to add, but I won't answer any questions.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. You can sit down. I now close. Anyone else?
No, sir.
Close the public hearing at 8:05 PM. What's the pleasure of the board, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number R-22-008 to be rezoned from RC 1 subdivision to A1 agricultural district.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. What about a second?
Second.
Mr. Dudley, any discussion?
Yes, sir.
I just have one question to clear up. Emily, we got, right behind this property is a piece of property zone, looks like DZ. It's, it's, actually has two zonings. Can you tell me what they are? It's more of a curiosity question than there was.
They're A1 and RC 1, I believe.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, gentlemen, if not, cast your vote. Mr. Barxdale, wait for your vote. All right, Ms. Eens, your property has been rezoned. Thank you for coming. This is case number two, public hearing, R22-009. Ms. Raxdale, open the public hearing at 8:07 PM.
Case R-22-009, Ronnie Warren has petitioned to rezone 2.91 acres located on State Road 622 Cascade Road in the Tunstall election district from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for an accessory building to be placed on a property without a dwelling. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The planning commission recommended by a seven-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Ronnie Warren is here to represent the petition.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Warren, you care to speak, sir? Where you at? No? Okay, thank you. Anyone else sign up to speak?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing at 8:08 PM. And I'm going to make the motion that, in case R22-009, I make the motion to approve the rezoning or rezone 2.91 acres from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for an accessory structure to be placed on the property. The rezoning should be consistent with the county's comprehensive plan.
Second.
All right. Mr. Barxdale, second that. So if you would hit the button. Any further comments, questions?
No, sir.
Not cast your vote. Thank you, sir. All right, sir, your property has been rezoned. Thank you for coming. This is case number R22-015. Open the public hearing at 8:09 PM. Ms. Raxdale.
Case R-22-015, Bradley and Shannon McEwen have petitioned to rezone 34.9 acres located on State Road 57, Halifax Road in the Bannister election district from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for agricultural uses on the property. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The planning commission recommended by a seven-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bradley McEwen is here to represent the petition.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. McEwen, you care to speak, sir? Where you at? No comment. Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone sign up to speak?
No, sir.
All right. I'm going to make the motion, case R22-015, to approve the rezoning of a total of 34.9 acres from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for agricultural uses. The rezoning would be consistent with the county's comprehensive plan. What about a second?
Can I get you to close that public hearing, please?
Oh, yeah, which one? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
8:10, 8:10 PM. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, what about a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cheshire. Any comments or questions? Not cast your vote. All right, Mr. Barxdale, if you would, cast your vote.
Ready for your vote?
Go ahead and vote.
Okay. All right. Sir, your land's been rezoned. Thank you for coming. This is case R22-019. Ms. Raxdale. And I'll open the public hearing at 8:11 PM.
Case R-22-019, Industrial Development Authority of Pittsman County has petitioned to rezone 36.5 acres located on Brazzle Industrial Trail in the Tunstall election district from M1 Industrial District Light Industry to M2 Industrial District Heavy Industry to allow more, for more intensive industrial uses. Once the property is rezoned to M2, all uses listed under Section 35-402 are permitted. The planning commission recommended by a seven-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, I do not believe that anyone from the IDA is here, and I believe Katie with economic development left. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead, Ms. Warren.
I don't have any questions, but, Ms. Raxdale, if we read the summary that is included in the packet, it makes a reference to changing it from M1 to M2 Industrial District Heavy Industry to allow for more intensive industrial uses. The subject property is located Brazzle Industrial Trail in the Tunstall election district and shown on the map, and it gives the gen number. Once the property is rezoned to A1, that's a type of...
That's a mistake. It is M2.
I just want to go on the record as saying we need to clean that up as M2. And just for the record, so I won't have to say this again, the same thing happened on case number five.
That's right. Good job.
Anyone else? All right. Close the public hearing at 8:13 PM. I'll make the motion that we approve the rezoning... I'm sorry. Then jumped on me here, Caitlin. I make the motion to approve the rezoning of 36.5 acres from M1 Industrial District Light Industry to M2 Industrial District Heavy Industry to allow for more intensive industrial uses. The rezoning would be consistent with the county's comprehensive plan and also make note of Mr. Warren's changes in this motion.
And I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Any comments, gentlemen? If not, cast your vote. Thank you, sir. All right, Ms. Emily, this is case number R22-23. I open the public hearing at 8:14 PM.
Case R-22-023, the Industrial Development Authority of Pittsman County has petitioned to rezone 51.04 acres located on State Road 1299 Kane Creek Parkway in the Dan River election district from M1 Industrial District Light Industry to M2 Industrial District Heavy Industry to allow for more intensive industrial uses. Once the property is rezoned to M2, all uses listed under Section 35-402 are permitted. The planning commission recommended by a seven-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, again, no one is here from IDA, but I will be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else sign up to speak?
No, sir.
All right, I close this public hearing at 8:14 PM. Mr. Cheshire.
Yes, Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make our motion, case R-22-23, Economic Development Authority of Pittsman County rezoned from M1 Industrial District Light Industry to M2 Industrial District Heavy Industry with the changes that were made by Mr. Warren.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Mr. Chairman, before we go any further, also in that motion, it reads, in case R-22-019, and actually, I think it's 023. Is that correct? So if we could be certain that language is correct on that, please? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Are y'all looking up at 19 versus 23?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you. Okay. All right, for the record, this is case 23.
Yes.
Good, thank you. All righty. Gentlemen, no further comments, questions? Just cast your vote. And that has been rezoned. Thank you, Ms. Raxdale. Under Item B, Other Public Hearings, each person addressed to the board under a public hearing shall step up, give his or her name and district and his or her place of residency for non-county residents in an audible tone of voice for the record, unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. Speakers for a group shall be limited to 10 minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at that time unless consent of the board is affirmatively given to extend the speaker's allotted time. Absent chair's approval, no persons shall speak who has not signed up. This is PCC Chapter 4, Erosion and Sediment Control. Ms. Raxdale, open the public hearing at 8:17 PM.
Mr. Chairman, the Community Development Department is responsible for overseeing the enforcement of the Erosion and Sediment Control program for Pittsman County. This is required by the state code. This program requires that staff conduct biweekly inspections for all open erosion and sediment control projects. And these are for any project, any commercial project over 10,000 square feet. And this also includes any residential project that is not associated with the construction of a single-family dwelling. As we have approved more solar projects in the county and more have began construction, it has become a strain on our one certified inspector that does erosion and sediment control to be able to conduct these biweekly inspections as required. So staff has proposed changes to Chapter 4 in the Erosion and Sediment Control portion of the ordinance to require that solar facilities pay for third-party inspectors. The county would put out an RFP to secure these services, and then we would bill the project developer monthly for any inspections that are required. This third-party inspector would be responsible for conducting the inspections and then submitting all required documentation to my department so that we would remain in compliance with DEU's requirements. And all that is included in your packet, those changes that we're proposing.
Okay, thank you. Anyone sign up to speak?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing at 8:19 PM. Gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion to approve the PCC Chapter 4 revisions as attached and presented by Ms. Raxdale.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. What about a second?
Second.
Mr. Warren Beecher, Mr. Dudley, Mr. Barxdale. Any further discussion? If not, cast your vote. Okay, and that is passed. That brings us down to unfinished business. Ms. Gord, thank you, and Mr. Hunt have this one.
Yes, we'll double-team this.
All right. I distinguish Commissioner Revenue, Robin Coles-Gord. Would you please come up? Good to have you, ma'am. Thank you.
The board is aware of what's going on. We're just seeking some clarification at a staff level. At the April 19, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting, the board unanimously voted to grant a real estate tax exemption to First Pentecostal Holiness Church in IRS 501(c)(3) owned property. At the meeting, a church representative was asked for a refund of prior year's tax payments if appropriate. Recently, Mrs. Gord and her staff have notified us that no refunds are given for this type of exemption. It just becomes effective the date the board approves it prospectively into the future. According to Virginia Code, the only time a refund is granted by the Commissioner of Revenue for previously paid tax years is if there was an erroneous tax situation. This is not the case here. In that case, the Commissioner of Revenue can refund up to three years past taxes paid. I'm here to inform you that the board, if it so desires, despite that, can and does possess legal authority to authorize the treasurer to refund the church any back taxes. As you've heard from the preacher today, that the two parcels in question are vacant land, and they've been paying $2,933.22 annually for their real estate taxes. So if you were to grant a three-year refund, that would be $8,799.66. So we're just looking for direction from the board. If you want to give them any back taxes, how many years? And we'll make it happen. I will turn it over to Mrs. Gord now to explain the erroneous tax situation. She's an expert on that.
Thank you, sir.
I'll play in that sandbox every day.
Okay, the Virginia State, the State Code of Virginia, 58.1-3980, allows the Commissioner of Revenue to instruct the treasurer to issue a refund if there's been an erroneous assessment. And this was not an erroneous assessment. This, as Mr. Baden has stated, is vacant land that the church owns. It doesn't have any buildings on it. And, you know, in order to be classified as being a church and exempt under that, it would have to be used in some type of way on a permanent basis, you know, by the church. And in this case, it's not because it's vacant. I think they said they occasionally park there if they have in some type of event on the property or something, you know. But that's why it's been taxed from the time that they've owned it up until now. And the board has already exempted it by designation and not classification as being a church.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gord.
You're welcome.
Mr. Warren, I believe this is in your district.
Yeah.
What's your pleasure?
Mr. Ingram, I'm going to make the motion that we refund three years' worth of their taxes totaling $8,799.66. I do believe that was the intent of the board. Unfortunately, I'll take the blame for my terminology in saying per policy because they will still have paid $25,657.54. I do know for a fact they are in the process now of a building program in order to sell all of their property that is on North Main Street, and they're relocating there. I think it'd be a great addition to our community out there, and this board does have the authority to refund that. They will still have paid in excess of $25,657.54, even if we refund the $87,996. Really, you know, they didn't understand. And that's a heavy penalty to absorb the $25,000, so...
I'm going to second it.
I don't want to penalize anymore.
And I would just like to add that it's not that, you know, I was against them getting the money back, but just legally, I could not ask the treasurer's office to refund it due to the statute in the Code of Virginia.
I think I actually, when I made the motion, said per statute. So that tied your hands from being able to do anything, so...
But like you said, you do, the board has the authority. If they want to refund it, then you may do so. It's your pleasure. You just authorize the treasurer to refund it and not the commissioner.
And I'm going to second that. All right, any discussion, gentlemen? You have a motion and a second? All right, gentlemen, cast your vote. That passes unanimously, so thank y'all for coming.
I think it's more in alignment with just simply doing the right thing.
Absolutely. That's right. Thank you, sir.
I want to be able to sleep at night, you know?
I wanna be able to sleep at night, you know?
Yep.
Let's see now, that brings us down to, under unfinished business, item B, Fire and Rescue Service Agreement. Mr. Chris Key, I think you're gonna present, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Okay, the county's Public Safety Department, we require the county volunteer fire and rescue agencies to sign an annual service agreement that details the expectations of both parties. At the Board's May meeting, the Board reviewed the service agreement and sent it back to the Fire and Rescue Commission requesting two changes. One change added a clause to Section Six B of the service agreement regarding how dual service agencies would be credited with getting additional funding when it answers over seventy percent of the calls in one service but under seventy percent in another service. This has been changed in the agreement and is sent before you. The second change involved volunteers being cleared to return to active duty following a serious medical condition. The Fire Rescue Commission discussed the issue and is working on it through the county standard operating procedures instead of adding it to the service agreement. The service agreement does require all agencies to follow county SOPs and guidelines. The Fire Rescue Commission recommended the Board approve the attached revised fiscal year twenty-three service agreement.
Thank you, sir. What about a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Cheshire, thank you. What about a second? Need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Now, any discussion comments?
Point of discussion on item B eight, it says here that there will be some accounting done on the monies that the county has provided to the agencies, but there will be no documentation until July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three. So since January fourth, when all accounting requirements were taken away from the fire and rescue agencies, this means they'll go for about a year and a half or so without any kind of accounting at all. And I'm just wondering if we can backdate that and have them do one for this year as well, since originally there were accounting policies in place at January of this year. For the record, I won't vote on this unless a change is made. This is really a lame attempt to show accountability after what we had in place as of January first of this year.
Well, have I said this before, and I'm gonna say it again, when the command staff of a fire department makes a request, and it goes to their board of directors, which are usually peers of our community, like Mr. H.F. Haymore, Bert Sellers, and they send a request to the Fire and Rescue Association, who in turn sends it to the Fire and Rescue Commission, who in turn sends it to Public Safety, and they vet it, and then our finance director vets it. We're not talking about accountability anymore. We're talking about nothing but harassment of these fire and rescue personnel, and I hope and pray someday that it will stop. The only thing that I ever said that would, I guess, come anywhere near what you're implying is that when a citizen donates money to that specific department, what they give to that department is not our business. We only should be held accountable for what county dollars, taxpayer money, goes to that organization, and as far as I can tell you, every bit of that is accounted for. Apart from that, I don't know how more accountable it could be. We don't have any criminal investigations. We don't have any complaints. I just think our fire and rescue people do a fabulous job, and to keep hearing this nonsense of no accountability, I just don't know what more to say.
The only comments I have is, I would, if Ms. Vanderhyde, when we start doing our budget, we do it, you know, kinda January, February, March type thing to prepare to pass it before then. Will we have adequate information and accounting with good numbers so we can have that budget ready for next July? That would be my only concern about it not being in till July. I mean, that's my biggest concern about it not being in till July, because I would want the information in from you guys so then when we're talking about how much is gonna be allocated to each agency, we have it in time to be able to use it during the time we're doing your budget that's gonna start July of twenty-twenty-three, which.
We base the volume call volume, and that's where the call volume, and that's how it's, you know.
So the call, so the call volume will be provided through, I mean, we would know what it was through December.
Y'all, y'all come up here so we can hear you, please.
This is just, the report they're asking for is the expenses for this year that's coming up. So it shows how all your expenses were handled throughout the year, and that's, we're submitting it for approval then.
But our budget, our annual budget that we use the figures from are numbers that we'll get now from Mr. Key as far as their call volume, and it's based on the matrix. And then we apportion that based on the expense that Pennsylvania County pays on behalf of the agency. So it's nothing that we would need from them in order to have that, because we have, you know, we pay for all their fuel, we pay for all their electricity, and so from one year to the next, we'll know how much we're supposed to put in each of those buckets. And so that's how we base our annual budget on. It's based on call volume. So I think that's fine. We would have, I think, what we would need. The other item is usually we give money for apparatus, and that's done through the Fire and Rescue Association. They make recommendation of who is in need, and that's approved through that method, and it comes through the budgeting process.
It's a tossy, yeah.
Okay, so now that's even a different thing that's on rotation, so.
But between you as a finance director, you as public safety director, and you as director of operations, if there's any problems, I think you guys would see it, and after all, as a county, we get an audit every year, and the auditors dig into all the numbers. Have we had any problems?
Not.
Has any, any department reported that they have a problem with personnel? Have you had any inkling that any department has mismanaged funds? The answer's no, isn't it? Thank you.
I just have a quick rebuttal. One, we did complete one audit on Keeling before the, all the accounting issues were disappeared, and from what I understand, it was a pretty painless accountability for that department. I don't foresee any problems, but when you're safeguarding the tax money of this county, those are things you do for transparency. And as far as I'm concerned, any nonprofit that's afraid to have an accounting firm come in and check their books, that something's wrong with that attitude. A nonprofit ought to open up their books to anybody that submitted a dollar to them, and that's, that's usually been the norm with nonprofits I've dealt with. They don't have a problem opening their books to anyone. On top of that, there were a lot of lies that went out, especially about the fact that the accounting firm was asking for donor information, specifically names and addresses and contact information for donors, and that was not the case either. So there was a lot of misinformation that went around with that stuff, too. So as far as I'm concerned, you know, a nonprofit ought to be willing to open their books to anyone that's submitted a dollar to them.
And I think if you take a close look, most of these departments do their own internal audit. And as far as misinformation, it was an ex-county administrator that was driving this train, and we stopped that on January the fourth, so.
When you say driving the train.
If you would, go ahead, gentleman, cast your vote.
If you're not gonna vote. This was driven by the fire and rescue study that was done in two thousand fifteen. Their requirements were that every department get audited every year, and so they almost went to two times a year for every department. That was a fire and rescue study that they approved. It was not, did not come from our former county administrator, just to set the record straight.
Well, I'm, I'm all in.
You do it.
I wanna mention one thing for clarity. I happen to serve on this board for the last six and a half years, and for the last couple of years, there has been a lie. It's no other way to put it, told. And I found it very offensive because I happen to be the chairman, and I, there has been no time since I served on this board that I haven't been supportive of fire and rescue and intend to continue to do that. But there was a lie being told. I went to the people that was perpetuating the lie and told them, showed them, there had never been a Board of Supervisors member in any meeting that had asked for a list of donors' names. That part I found highly offensive, and I was really disappointed in two of the individuals. One sits on the Fire and Rescue Commission now, and one is a very distinguished, I consider him a friend, chief, but he continued to perpetuate that on multiple occasions and did it within the last couple of months. So I would like to read this letter from Harris, Harvey, Neal, and Company, LLP. I had every intention of keeping this in my file, but I think it needs to be heard by the public. I went to our finance director and requested that she reach out to them to find out who had propagated the misinformation that anybody from the Board of Supervisors or any employee of the county at any time had instructed them to request any donor list. And here is the letter. It's to Ms. Kim Vanderhyde from Stephen M. Gay, CPA. This was provided to every member of this board a couple of months ago. It's referencing fire and rescue audits. During twenty-twenty-one Pennsylvania County, Virginia, engaged our firm to perform cash receipts and disbursement audits of two fire rescue agencies that the county provided support. Before we were able to complete our audit, the county voted to eliminate the need for these audits. While performing our audits, we select, selected a sample of donor contributions and tested them for accuracy and completeness. At no time, at no time, did the county nor any of its representatives request donor information, and no such information, no such information was provided. Please feel free to call or email me if you have any questions. Stephen M. Gay, Harris, Harvey, Neal, and Company, LLP. It is time to put this to rest. Both sides need to stop this lie. Nobody from your county, no elected official nor any county employee has, it's been affirmed by the largest accounting firm that did that audit, ever requested that information. It's time to stop that. Thank you.
Thank you. I totally agree. It is time to stop it, but some people just won't let it go. We voted on stopping the audits, and it passed. We stopped it, and I thought it was a done deal. To keep going back and reliving this over and over and over is not only a waste of time, but it's absolutely embarrassing. It accomplishes nothing. Fire and rescue people deserve much better than this, and I wanna go back to this letter. Mr. Warren is correct. We all got a copy of it, but it simply says, while performing our audits, we selected a sample donor contributions and tested them for accuracy and completeness. This goes back to what I've been trying to say. A fire chief and a treasurer of a department called me and said, Mr. Ingram, this accountant called me and wants a list of our donors, what they gave and when they gave it, and I said, we discontinued the audits, don't give them anything. That is private between the donor and the department. It's got nothing to do with taxpayer money, nothing. Anyone else?
I still wanna be clear that we didn't ask for it.
Okay, yes, I will agree, because I know that. I respect donors. Being a member of a fire department back in the seventies, you didn't ask who gave what. You respected that. And that's another can of worms. When you start looking at who gives what to what department, it's not our business. It's that donor. If they leave an endowment or a trust, it's between them and who they wanna give it to. It's not our business. That's all I've ever said. You've got these Facebook warriors out here typing like some kind of drunk monkey coming up with some crazy, unbelievable nonsense. When you speak of lies, Lord, I live it every day, but, but anyway, as simple as I can put, a private donor that gives to a department, it's nobody's business. Tax dollars, it is accounted for, it's heavily accounted. I don't know what more we can do. This whole stuff about an audit back prior to January the fourth was to find out what different departments had in their bank accounts, and I heard him say it, so that's all I'm gonna say.
All I can say is the critical piece of information that came to the Keeling audit was that they, we supplied seventy-one percent of their funding. When it comes time to make the new budget, knowing those kind of pieces of information, how much funding we're trying to give the departments, I know it was at one point we're trying to get a hundred percent funding for all departments. We don't know what they're getting from the county, don't understand what they need from the county. It's kinda hard to make those budgetary decisions, and I think this is just one way to hold the county and anyone that we give county taxpayer money accountable for. And I don't know how to change that idea of accountability and transparency and why you don't understand that, but that's on you.
You gonna go over to the First Pentecostal Church and see how they spent that money we just awarded them? Probably not. All right, gentlemen.
I'm on vacation, so I'm not gonna do anything, thanks to you.
All right. Any further comments or questions?
No, I'm actually very disappointed in this discussion, just to be blunt with you. My biggest battle, I thought, was gonna be cancer, not what I'm dealing with right here. And I'm, I don't even know what to say right now. But some lines have been crossed.
Anyone else? All right, gentlemen, cast your vote.
Mr. Cheshire, just for clarity, can I get you to repeat that motion, please?
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Can you repeat that motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
To approve it as presented, is that correct? Okay.
And what about a second?
A second.
Mr. Dalton, thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Okay, that appears to pass unanimously, believe it or not. Thank you, sir. Any items on a new business?
No, sir.
Okay. Matters from the work session.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I've got some Finance Committee recommendations.
That's gonna be thirteen A, I believe.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Oh, I'd make a motion to approve the Finance Committee recommendations as presented in the work session.
Okay, thank you, sir. What about a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Dudley, thank you, sir. Any discussion? Doc, cast your vote. Waiting, Mr. Ragsdale, your computer still cutting up over there? Okay, that's passed, seven zip. And what about thirteen B? Who has that?
I make a motion to approve the Berkeley Group Work Order Two for the County Administrator Search.
Second. Thank you, sir, Mr. Dudley. Thank you for that. Second, any comments, questions on this? I think for the public, we need to let them know what this meant. Agreed?
Yep.
We, as a board, unanimously agreed to hire the Berkeley Group to conduct a nationwide search for county administrator. Now, I said nationwide, I didn't say worldwide. And, and that will expedite the process, and hopefully will have us some candidates pretty soon that we can interview and have us a full-time county administrator, even though I'm still hoping Mr. Monday would change his mind and stay with us. So having said that. Yes, sir, Mr. Warren, please.
I would like to notify the citizens that we were. I would like to notify the citizens that we were able to secure the majority of anything expense-wise for this search from one of our local foundations.
And that was good. And let me thank you and Mr. Barkstall for doing that. So in essence, it won't cost the county anything, okay? All right, that now passes seven zip. Board member reports, let me start with you, Mr. Cheshire. I know you want to go home.
No, I have nothing.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dudley.
Yes, sir. Thank you all for your patience to stay with us during the meeting. Appreciate everyone coming. I think it's important. I wish more citizens would show up and take part, so appreciate all of y'all coming. There is, there is one family. If anybody has a pen, you could write this down. There's a lady in my church. Her name is Patsy Trent. Years ago, she lost a son in a bad car accident, lost a husband to cancer. Years later, she remarried and lost her second husband to cancer as well. And then yesterday, she lost a daughter. And she had three children. She has one remaining. And I promised the family that we would get the word out to lift her up. Her name's Patsy Trent. Think it's very important that there's many, many needs out there. And I think we should, in this day and time, be lifting each other up in prayer. So I would appreciate anyone that will take this out and lift up Ms. Patsy Trent. Thank you, Mr. Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Mr. Warren.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scars.
Yeah, I just would like to give my heartfelt thanks to not only county leadership, but also Robin Gourd, the Commissioner of Revenue for the deal that was made with Pearson's Appraisal Services Incorporated. They're the new reassessment group and they've agreed to go out and take the thirty-two-hundred-plus parcels that new structures were found on. And they are gonna validate those structures. And there was an estimated seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars in tax revenues that could be garnered. We won't know for sure until they're validated. But we were already, haven't even gotten into the next year's budget cycle yet as far as the new budget expenditures. And we're already been asked for more money. And so any money we garner from these new structures is gonna be a big boon for the county and especially as we get into the two thousand twenty-four-year budget, which we will actually start working on in November if we go by the regular schedule. So for me, the tax revenues is a big thing, but more than everything, it's a fairness issue to all our county citizens. So I appreciate the county leadership and Robin Gourd for agreeing to work with Parsons and help the county out.
Mr. Barkstall.
I thank everybody that came out to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dalton.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank everyone that come out tonight, all the county staff, what a great job they've done. And this past weekend, I'd like to recognize out at the Old Dominion Ag Center, it was Eastern Regional Junior Anger Show, and I had the opportunity to attend that and the pleasure of meeting our Secretary of Agriculture. And also this past week was Virginia Ag Week, so things about our falls. But other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. As I opened up, would you guys remember Dean Cumbo? But cancer's everywhere, is it, Mr. Dudley? Last month, we had Mariah Shepherd, the daughter of Jimmy Davis, who was our nine-one-one director for many years, come and talk about Danville, Pennsylvania cancer. And I have to bring that up again because it looks like people north of Chatham don't know that Danville, Pennsylvania cancer is there to help them as well. I'm a lifetime member and I can tell you that we've helped a whole lot of people. We go up to five hundred dollars per month per client. Anything cancer-related, including travel, lodging, pharmaceuticals, prostheses, you name it. And it's a shame that more people don't reach out and say, listen, I need your help. At that time of need, the last thing anybody needs is a financial word. And you can go to the website, do an application online. And as long as you live in the Danville, Pennsylvania county area and you are suffering from cancer, you will not be turned down regardless of what you have, what you don't have. I also wanted to compliment Axol with their announcement this couple of weeks ago, three-point-five-million-dollar expansion project, which would be twenty-one jobs. Our governor, Governor Glenn Youngkin, came down and participated in that wonderful announcement. And Commonwealth Home Healthcare, they are moving three of their, with their three operations, which is Commonwealth Home Healthcare, Commonwealth Document Management, as well as FireSafe into the Blair's Community of Pennsylvania County, which once again is quite of a nice gift for the county. I do want to remember, Entertate, they celebrated thirty-five years. They've had eighteen expansions over the past thirty-five years, which is almost unheard of. And, excuse me, I want to echo the importance of the school sales tax referendum. Like Mr. Warren said, I want people that don't live here to help us pay for what we need for our schools. And as Dr. Irwin said, these children, these teachers need more than what we're providing. So if this doesn't pass, and we're talking about one penny per dollar, it's gonna come back to this board and we're gonna have to figure out what to do. Some people are mighty confused with, well, the lottery pays for it. No, the lottery pays for education. It's our job to pay for construction and improvements. That's what this, this money would be earmarked for. And finally, there was comment made about the change in the seating arrangements. So if you're confused about the musical chairs, I would like to say that Mr. Warren brought to our attention last week that we were not in compliance with the bylaws by way of seating arrangement, and he was absolutely right. So we allow the senior members to pick their seat, and that's where we're at today. All right, what you got, Mr. Monday?
I'm good, Mr. Chairman. No, thank you.
Mr. Hut.
I have nothing.
Anyone else? Let's go home.